And connecting with our, our cultural historical and. We have here in this, in this beautiful, beautiful state. So that was that. That my share and answer any questions you may have.
Hi, Mr. Stot.
Hey Teresa, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Oh, that is beautiful. Um, Kayla, thank you for that presentation. I have two questions until we further discuss it and it maybe will pop up. First one, can we be able to provide a list of all those available parks? I mean, we're closer to San Bruno and I, that was the first part that I came over like, hey, we're right up there on the mountain, but we don't have it. So can we have a list of parks that is going to be available without no restrictions, like you were mentioning about the federal, if they were available for the patrons?
Yes, um, they, uh, the program organizers really wanted to, um, kind of just they, and they have provided a list of the entities that, that won't accept, um, the passes. Um, and so actually staff went through and process of elimination. They actually are working on a list of places where you can take the pass. Um, so we'll definitely include that. We'll put that, they, they have a website that's pretty inclusive.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, how old would be the patron to have that pass?
Good question. I do not believe that there is a minimum age requirement in place, but I would, I would want to confirm that with the person who entered them into our catalog because the way that our catalog works, there's like a table of rules that, that would apply to it. I don't believe that it does have that.
Okay. So we, the trustees, can we get a pass to ourselves?
You absolutely pending availability. You're absolutely welcome to, to check one out. We, we have, um, created sort of a, a little dummy case, um, as kind of as a stand-in and put it on our, our new shelves or our lucky day shelves. The people can ask about it.
And so how many, uh, pass per library?
So currently it's the one and, and any day now we're expecting the rest of them. And so that, the, they'll each have, probably four, um, or five.
And first come, first served.
Exactly.
Oh, wow, that's only the first one. Okay. And so what exactly do they have to do there in those parts? Like, uh, they will just have to follow the rules and everything of each entities, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm. It's a, it, it, um, as you saw in the picture, it's just a hang tag and it just allows you to, to come through the gates and say, see, I have a pass.
Right. Okay. Those were my questions. Thank you so much. Um, Dr. Letts, I see your hand up.
Right, uh, Kayla, so I've got just one other question. If a person wants to obtain a pass, uh, do they just have to keep going back to the library and hope that the pass is returned at the moment before they walk in or, you know, shortly before they walk in? Uh, is there any predictability at all in terms of how to access passes?
So we, we actually, this was a topic of, of great discussion. Um, and, and there are similar in some ways to the, um, wifi hotspots. Um, and so we'll probably implement something similar. Currently there's just the one at each location, but when we have more of them, um, we do anticipate that there will be, you know, people don't want to make an unnecessary trip. Obviously people can call and what we'll, we will most likely do is have a period of time at which we set it aside if they, when they call, there is one.
Oh, good. Okay, um, is there anybody else?
I don't have any questions, but I'm pretty excited about, about this too. And it's, it's great, um, promotion for like people to get out and spend time with family.
Right.
So I'm always like amazed by like, you know, the things that were, I feel like there's always like new stuff that the libraries are doing, which is great. So I just appreciate all these opportunities. And thank you, Shayla, for the, um, report.
Yeah, and I very much appreciate the state parks and the state library, um, for, for making this partnership possible. And they've kind of opened the door to potentially getting, you know, um, people to come into the libraries, um, rangers to do programs. So there's just a lot, a, a lot of possibilities opened with this program.
Thank you. Okay, um, thank you for that. Uh, we're now going to move to trustees' report. And the first one on the agenda is the P project.
Well, I'm the one who introduced it, uh, at the last meeting, so I'll, uh, take the lead on speaking about it. We did have a presentation, uh, by the group, uh, known as Aviole, uh, which is based in Canada. Uh, the organization was started in 2013. It's now spread to from Canada to North America, uh, you know, across the United States, uh, and into a number of countries in Europe. And basically, uh, you know, their, their purpose is to help organizations, bring bees to buildings to provide, uh, education, uh, and more direct experiences to make people, uh, not only fall in love with bees, but appreciate bees, understand the role of bees, uh, you know, in, uh, the web of agriculture. It's a, a project that has several different locations currently in San Fran, well, in the San Francisco Bay area, including, uh, the most, the nearest is out at Oyster Point in South San Francisco. Uh, they do have sites and schools and libraries. Generally, the beehive is placed on the roof of a building belonging to the sponsoring entity, which means that in most cases, the hive itself is not accessible, uh, to the general public. But, uh, part of the program is to have two, at least two one-hour presentations every year uh, of an educational or engagement nature, uh, as defined by the sponsoring organization. Uh, it's a turnkey operation, which means that Aviole, uh, provides the bees, the hives, all of the infrastructure necessary to, uh, maintain a healthy and sustainable hive. They're licensed, uh, they're bonded. The bees that they have used or that they have in their, their program are especially known for their, uh, gentleness, their facility. Stinging is not a problem, both because the hives are elevated and away from the general public and the bees have no interest, you know, in stinging if they can instead be out gathering nectar from flowers and making honey in the, in the hive. So, uh, this was introduced as a concept. And what I would, uh, invite our comments from other trustees. Uh, Lauren, you were just mentioning how many new and different things libraries get involved with. And, you know, this is another opportunity, uh, to engage our community in, uh, both an educational and an interesting pursuit, as well as something that supports a, uh, a particular insect that's under a lot of stress right now because of climate change, because of pesticides, because of different types of land use that, uh, we've evolved over time. Uh, so going back, uh, what I would like to do is invite comments. And, uh, you know, if the board, uh, would like to pursue this, I would recommend that a two-person committee be appointed to, uh, take the idea to the, uh, Daily City Public Library Associates and present it to them as a potential partnership activity with the Daily City Libraries. And then the third leg of the partnership stool, so to speak, would be the city itself and the libraries. Kayla is certainly familiar with the project. Uh, and since I'm in and out of the Westlake branch often, I've talked to some of the librarians there and also, uh, Karen, um, you know, who's the supervisor and uh, they seem, you know, if not interested, at least intrigued and, you know, open to that idea. So with that, uh, you know, I would invite Shayla, uh, or any trustee to comment, reflect, ask questions. And hopefully we can move this to some sort of action item that, uh, can move us ahead in the future.
So I, I did reach out to, to Public Works, um, to, and because it, um, it would be a rooftop project where, where we're located. Um, and so, um, I've actually been on, um, quite a number of our, our roofs, but they, it's kind of submarine like, like it's a little narrow, um, metal, um, ladder that goes up through a small hatch. Um, and that is the case at the Westlake Library, definitely. Um, and at the, um, both the Bay Shore and John Daly Libraries, although the John Daly Libraries is multiple floors. And then at, um, at Ceremony Library, um, the, the, there's really no roof access. They just lay up a, um, a ladder against it. And as you, as you've seen, it's a pitch roof. So, um, the, the feedback I got was that, um, not necessarily the, the roof over the library, which as I mentioned is, is not that accessible, but, um, there, the roof over the rest of the Bay Shore Community Center, there is actually a point at which it can be accessed through a normal human-sized door. It would require roof, um, fortification, I guess, is because it's not, it's a roof and it's, um, meant to keep out weather, not, not have foot traffic on it. So it would require some kind of, um, fortification to, to make it usable for something like this. But that would be the only really accessible rooftop area if we were going to move forward with something like this.
I actually, I actually went to, just recently, I was on top of that roof, Jayla, and, um, it is, I was, because we were thinking of some activities, I'm like, well, what's the use of this roof? You know, to, to maybe like outdoor stretch out or for students or maybe for seniors. But that's what, um, the manager of the Boys and Girls Club, oh no. I don't think you will wanna, it's, it's required exactly those words you're saying. It's, but it's really a huge open spaces over there and it oversees the, you know, actually Bay Shore going down and the fire station on the left. So it's really beautiful. But, um, going back to Dr. Lex, um, I enjoy listening to the project and, and when it was present, the whole presentation, um, even, um, Mr. Stephen too, I know that he was into it because he shared his experiences and that his parents too as well. My only, um, my only concern is, um, the fundings that we'll be able to to the whole logistics of the, of the, of the project. Um, and if I'm all for it, but to me, it all goes down to the city with their approval if that's something that they will be able to go for. I don't have a problem with partnership with, uh, with D C P L A. If they're willingly to meet us, you know, we can go partnership with having that project. Um, I think it's a good thing to bring it to Daily City. But the ironing of it, uh, we need to look at all the pros and cons. None of liability. I'm all about liability. You know, and then did, the, the question is, did they ever present it, uh, do a presentation for the city council yet?
Well, it hasn't gotten that far.
Okay.
And if, if we, uh, adopt it as a project that we would like to sponsor, then at some point, I imagine it would go to the council. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, Mr. Steven will be the best person to kind of know the process of these kind of projects. Because if I would, you know, what if we just pilot, you know, just do two, two things, a bee's to try it out, you know, and to see how, how it is to maintain and all that. Because I remember in the presentation, uh, they say all the maintenance will be done by them, if I remember correctly. Okay, Mr. Steven Stot, do you have any input on the matter?
Or, you know, I love this idea, you know, especially because our pollinators are in crisis, but, um, we did, in talking with Public Works, there was a concern if a rooftop location didn't work, we really couldn't put this on the ground somewhere in a park and risk vandalism or, or whatever. So that's, you know, if you do create a subcommittee of the board, that would be a consideration to take, you know, take in, under discussion. Um, we would definitely want to bring this program to the city council for approval. Um, one of the, the aspects that I guess we'd have to work out is long-term funding. Um, the company did provide us with their rate sheet. I think it was like $5,000 or something like that a year for one hive. And if D C P L A, you know, got us started one year, we would, we just have to talk about how to fund it year after year when we're facing, you know, decisions to really cut back on costs right now across the departments. So that's another thing that the subcommittee I think would have to really look into. Um, but Bay Shore being the only rooftop location where we could place a hive, it's not exactly the type of place where you can bring a group of students and interact with the bees and, you know, that's the fun part. So, um, we'd have to do a little more hunting on locations. And maybe we, we expand our scope or, you know, consider other non-library locations or something, but um, th- there, there's a lot to work out with it really when, when we, when we get down to it. And I know, Chela, um, you also looked into some other cities that had these hives, like Redwood City, right? Um, and they-
Redwood City does, yeah.
Yeah, and they, it seemed like they had it in a, not such an ideal location on their roof too, so.
I climbed through a window to get to it. They, they have a not working right now webcam on it as well. Um, but they, they work with a, um, a farm, a nonprofit farm. Um, and, um, so they have, rather than having people go to the hive, they have kind of created a little interpretive center within the, in an accessible indoor location. And then they have, you know, um, educational programs, we, which we have done, I think I mentioned this, I, maybe five, six years ago, we had, um, a, a company come out and do a presentation on bees, um, and pollination and things like that. Um, it's lovely, actually. Um, and so, and so that, depending on what the, the goals are, if, if, if other bee-related, um, initiatives wanted to be considered, there are definitely other, um, there are, there's more than one presenter that does, um, onsite programming.
If we had to go for non-library buildings or facilities on the top of your head, Stephen, do you kind of have any building that you? Not to put you on the spot.
I'd really have, we'd have to connect with our Public Works team, but, um, none really come to mind with roof access, so we, we can go back to them and, and take a look at other facilities.
Okay.
There are a lot of unknowns in here and, you know, the point of establishing a subcommittee would be to identify all of those questions that need to be addressed and to engage the various people and organizations that should have a say in where, when, how, uh, the project is implemented, if and should it, if in fact it should be. Uh, as Stephen rightly pointed out, funding is going to be a critical issue. And once we establish the subcommittee, there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to implement the project. We may run into some obstacles that are just insurmountable. But, you know, with a, a small group, uh, that is focused on, as I say, identifying the issues and trying to get answers to those questions, I think we can move ahead and determine whether or not this is feasible and make decisions sort of along the way. You know, we don't have to say today, we're, we're going to do it or not do it as much as we're going to attempt to do it and see what we encounter in that attempt. Uh, understanding that at some point we may find out that we can't go any further. But, you know, it seems like something worth, uh, exploring.
I like the sound of it. Um, Dr. Lex, uh, were they expecting you to give, uh, they, do you have a timeline to get back to them and, you know, to follow up with them if that's something that we, we would like to go forward with, or this is just an ongoing conversation and, um, having those conversations about it?
Well, I think it's an ongoing conversation, uh, with Aviole. And, uh, you know, they're a corporation that's not going away. They have their project here in the Bay Area, so they're established. And if we could become, uh, you know, a member of that community, uh, that would be wonderful. And I think they would welcome us uh, tomorrow or six months or even a year or two down the road.
Oh, that's great. Well, thank you so much. Okay, um, do we need to put this back on our agenda building? We can still-
Yeah, if you'd like to, um, go the subcommittee route tonight, um, you could just select two, two members of the board to be on that committee. And then they can run with it, you know, all the, all the questions and everything that have to be sorted out.
And then report back at the next meeting or, you know, subsequent meetings.
Okay. Do we need to pick the subcommittee now or?
Probably the best idea if you pick it now. Sounds like, uh, Mr. Lex would like to be on that subcommittee.
To serve. And, and chair for that matter.
Okay. You got this, Dr. Lex?
I'm sorry?
Do you got this? You don't need anybody else with you unless-
I mean, you know, if nothing else to, uh, have different ideas and say, Bill, that's never gonna work. And, you know, then we can hash it out.
Well, here's an opportunity. I, I, I don't want to go on it unless somebody else will love, would like to. Dr. Lex, Lauren?
Would it have to be someone on the library board?
Yes.
Okay. I unfortunately cannot.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I'll, I'll be with you, Dr. Lex.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. Uh, we'll, uh, touch base after the meeting in terms of getting together and trying to, uh, organize ourselves, if that's okay with you.
That's fine, perfectly fine. Okay, well, uh, we're moving on to the second one, um, the board vacancy. And, um, at this point, I don't have any follow-up on the vacancy unless Shayla and Stephen have something that they're going to surprise us with right now.
No surprises tonight, sorry.
Okay, well, still empty. That's okay.
And then the fifth announcement though, um, about, uh, the board vacancy. So I actually have to step down after the summer because I'm gonna be moving back to LA. I got accepted to a P, um, a PhD program at UCLA, and so I'm actually going back to grad school. Um, so I will not be living in Daily City anymore, but, um, I am like, you know, more than willing to promote the, the vacancies, um, so that we have people to, yeah, to fill that in and, and continue on with the work, the important work that we have. So I just wanted to, to let everyone know.
Well, congratulations, Ms. Lauren. You know, um, we appreciate everything that you have done.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
That's really good. Good for you.
Suggest though that somehow we need to, uh, ask the council to review applications that may be on file and to act on those applications if at all possible.
Yeah, I don't know if, if, if there's any application to, to even review, Stephen, if I'm correct. I, I don't know.
Um, I actually forwarded all the applications we've received and, um, a list of open, uh, uh, appointments to the full council, so it is with them currently.
To wait patiently with a smile.
And i- if I could ask Lauren, what would be your last day on the, the board? Is June your last or, or May?
Um, I would probably say like July would be my last, um, month.
Oh.
Yeah.
You still got a lot. Okay, July. Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, number five, report from the D C P L A.
Hello, everyone. Um, I didn't realize that I would be giving a report tonight. I'm sorry about that. Um, but it's a great opportunity for me to promote, of course, our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, uh, commencement, which is happening next week, Thursday, um, at Daily City City Hall, uh, and that'll be at 6:30. It's going to be a great program. Um, Aline is gonna do, uh, a wonderful reading and readings from all of the applicants. So all of the youth poets will be doing readings. Um, so it's gonna be a wonderful event and we hope, uh, to see you all there. Uh, and we're having a D C P L A meeting just on Thursday, this coming Thursday. So unfortunately I don't have any other up-to-date stuff, but it's wonderful to join you. Um, actually I watched the last, uh, committee or, uh, Board of Trustees meeting and I listened to that bee presentation and it's really fascinating. So I hope you guys get to move forward with that.
Thank you, Caitlin. And would you please, uh, let the board know that we will be reaching out to them? Uh, probably, let's see, so this is April, probably the May meeting. Uh, and making a presentation, uh, perhaps similar to what we saw last month, uh, with Aviole being part of it. Uh, and, you know, asking them, uh, to become partners with us in this effort.
Absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That event is on the 26th, huh?
Uh, the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate is on Thursday, April 28th.
Oh, perfect. Okay, I thought I was gonna say, I will be there.
Wonderful, wonderful. Really looking forward to it.
I know Dr. Lex will be able to be there.
Yeah, I'll be there too.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. It's really nice to have anybody from the D C P L A and thank you for all that too. I didn't have a chance to thank you guys for that beautiful luncheon.
That was a really fun event.
That was really beautiful, tremendously beautiful. And it was really good to see a lot of familiar faces and ran into some people. I haven't seen them since the COVID, so thank you so much.
Absolutely.
So please extend our sincere thank you for, to the, to the board and everybody.
I will.
Okay, um, moving down to announcements and communications. Any announcement?
I guess Lauren made the bombshell announcement already.
It's a bittersweet announcement. It's a bittersweet announcement. Okay, um also, I have, I don't know if I can share the flyers. Um Shayla. Okay, so I have the, we were supposed to have a car show for Jefferson on the fourteen. But it was canceled due to the weather, the forecast. And so we move it to the thirtieth of this month.
You should be able to share if you'd like.
Okay, so let me stu- let me share. Okay, and that is. That one right there. So that's the flyer. And it's from ten to four P M. And it's all proceeds goes to all the clubs and the senior and all the classes. The freshman, the sophomore, and the seniors. And then we also have another one for May fourteen. There's gonna be another event there. It's shine. So those are some of the events coming up at Jefferson. And these are all the. Ones going to be there. Okay. Those are my announcements and communications. I was able to, I took my son to Gillette. And then I pop into the library there on a Saturday. And I was ama- it's amazing to see the patrons are making their ways there. And I also love the park. I haven't been to that park, like, it's beautiful. So the the parents will come in, play there, and then I saw them taking them in the library. It is really beautiful, so I thank you all to all the the workers, the staff in all of the libraries. Okay, um does anybody else have anything else before I move down the agenda building? Okay, so agenda building, we can still have the P project conversation. And the board vacancy still. And then I would like to see, uh I would like to um hear a report. Shayla from the um from the State uh Park Passes. You know, um how is it going or do? And maybe it will be nice if we try to get some testimonies from those patrons that takes out the pass. You know, and it's something that we can put it on the newsletter, you know, share their experience and how they like it.
Absolutely, I I know that um, yeah, the state parks will be um also getting feedback, so hopefully they'll share that with us as well.
Okay. Is there any way we can send them a postcard or thank you? Or email from the board?
Um I'll I'll look for a good contact.
Okay.
Maybe our our state library.
Okay, just wait until we get the the rest. Okay, does anybody else have anything for the agenda building next time? That's a no. Okay. Um any public comment? Okay, well then, thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at six forty-five. Wish you all a wonderful week.
You as well.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone, good night.